I'm going to call to order the August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four Foxfire Village Regular Business Meeting. Let the record show that all members of the council are present with the exception of Mary Gilroy. In lieu of a holy prayer, we're going to have a moment of silence today. So please join me in a moment's silence. And join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any changes to the agenda? I have just one. I'm going to address the financials under the Maynard Report instead of Mary. So do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to public comment period. This is for public comments limited to items that are not on the agenda. So does anyone have any comments? Please step up and state your name and address.
Barbara Corr, for Foxfire Circle. At the last meeting, you said that there would be an assessment report at this meeting. I don't see anything on the agenda for the pool.
No, I said it would take a month at least to get it.
Four weeks.
Yeah, and that's an estimate.
Okay, so it's not ready yet?
No.
Do you have any idea when they will come through?
I'm still waiting.
Okay, thank you.
Tom McClellan, Freedom Court, Foxfire Village, North Carolina. I know I've spoken with, I just want to work clear on the public record. That is that I think that the Foxfire General Store should be brought to their attention and not taking good care of their property. And that's it. So thank you.
Get out of there. You already had your chats. I'm sorry.
Hi, Jacqueline Leary, seventy-three years old, Shamrock. I'm going to recognize the village council today for their accomplishments. As a collective group, our village council members have various backgrounds in zoning, planning, utilities management, finance, public safety, insurance, business acumen, and project management. These years of collective experience makes towns is what makes our council effectively manage, problem solve, to enable the village to benefit and grow as a fiscally responsible and safe community. The council members are elected and volunteer many hours a week to manage our community. These are four-year terms and unpaid positions. The council members are tasked with managing multiple projects that require short and long-term planning and finding solutions. Some projects run smoothly and some don't. However, the council members take their responsibilities seriously. They act with their best intentions in keeping our community safe and fiscally sound. They are advocates, not adversaries. There will be times when we ask questions of the council and will receive an immediate response from the council. There may be times that it may take additional time for the council to research, send emails, make phone calls, to find answers to our questions. There may be times when they may not be able to answer our questions. This is what happens in life. Sometimes we get answers that we like but we do not like, but all in all, generally you'll get an answer. Our council members have projects which they inherited from previous councils. For example, managing securing a vendor for the new well pump, the management repair of the community of the forty-plus-year-old pool, also the parks and trails improvements and road maintenance repairs. There are a few, these are a few of the many projects they work on besides other community and safety needs. They try their best to manage these projects and they seek out the best resources to mediate the problem. I have confidence in this council that they will seek out the best options to find solutions to existing projects and problems. What I would also like to point out is that the village council members are wives, husbands, parents, grandparents, but also our neighbors. I've met with them on our town picnic, and I sat down with them and ate a hot dog or two. They're just like, they're just like all of our neighbors, except they decided to run for office and were elected by the neighbors to represent our community. However, some unfortunate comments have been made on social media about our council, which I find very disturbing, disheartening, and actually embarrassing to read. The words to describe our council were dictator, money hungry, I'm sorry, not money hungry, they were...
I don't worry, I can't...
No, no, my mistake. They're dict, I'm sorry, let me repeat that. Some of the words disparaging remarks in the community...
If you should be able to address your comments to us, not to the audience.
I'm sorry, okay. They're a dictator, their own agenda, they want not what the community wants, nontransparency, a lack of communication and power-hungry. Since I moved here in 2022, I attended almost every town meeting where I watched video online to catch up. I found the council very transparent and updated some projects were discussed. Anyone at any time could view these videos online. It's your responsibility as part of this community to view these videos and learn more about the projects and communication of the council members and current standings on the community projects. At one council meeting, a neighbor asked questions about previous projects that were discussed about other meetings, and the council is happy to reiterate project updates and answer questions that have been asked before from other people. I feel that attacking our council members is just plain wrong. They deserve our support and respect. If some people don't feel they don't deserve our support and respect, that's the prerogative. Or if you'd like to step up to the plate and offer some assistance, that is great too. However, I don't think using social media to disparage our council members is an effective way to communicate and get things done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Oh, I forgot one thing. Can I say it? Okay, thank you. Sorry. I said, "I hope by sharing my feelings that my neighbors will recognize that our village council members are a significant value to our town. There are better tools to work together with our village councils to get results than tearing them down on social media. Thank you for allowing me to express my feelings, and I hope this information will make a difference. Also, if any community member has free time, the more kind and humane society needs dog walkers, please stop by to see them or give them a call. I'm sure they'd like to get some help." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jim Childers, ten South Rand Place, our neighborhood. First, regarding the preceding area. My item, though, relates to a problem on my street, South Rand Place. We have a definite drainage issue that unfortunately I can't bring my other neighbors because it basically affects my property and probably not theirs to a large degree. It's been poorly draining since we moved here in 2019. The water funnels down the street and comes basically entirely down my driveway and erodes the driveway to a great extent. I don't know if it's appropriate that I could maybe speak with our council member.
Well, not now.
Not now.
What did you say, what did you say your street was?
Red, South Red.
South Rand.
What's your numbers?
And we're number ten. I recently spoke with a contractor, a drainage driveway contractor, and he spoke about the possible construction of a drain near the top of my driveway that would ameliorate the problem to some degree, but I'll still face repair of my driveway, which he estimated to be five thousand, five hundred dollars. There's just no, the ditches that are there catch some water, but they really don't drain the road thoroughly, and it basically comes rushing down like a stream down the driveway. So hoping that Councilmember Norman might take a look at that with me and I could show photos.
I can take a look at it with you, yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Any other comments? Items not listed on the agenda? All right, let's move on to our zoning administrators' report.
This report is for zoning activities from July tenth through today, August thirteenth. Currently, thirty-three homes are under construction or in their beginning stages. Three single-family resident applications were received for homes on sixty-seven Richmond Road, two Wedgewood, and six seventy-five Bowman Road. Four certificate of zoning compliance were issued for homes at one thirty-five and one sixty-seven Portland Circle, twenty-three ninety Hoffman, and the fourth is for a structure modification at one fifty-eight Woodland Circle. Additional purpose issued for one for swimming pool, four fence, one temporary sign, two decks, and one accessory structure. And that's it.
On to department reports. We have the Water Department, Councilman Morgan.
All right. I want to begin by pointing out that the water restrictions haven't stepped onto stage two. This took place earlier last week. I believe the notice was posted on the village website on Monday, and also the signs around the village have been changed to reflect this. Stage-two signs are yellow, and they replace the red signs. Also, I want to thank Dustin Hale, the village crier, for offering and getting out a message out on social media. But before I go further, I'd like to mention that June was one of the driest in the state's history. I believe it was the fourth driest, while July and now into August are turning out to be one of the wettest in our history. As you can imagine, besides the conservation efforts of residents, the quirky weather pattern has also played a large part in where we stand today. We've made a decision to stay at stage two rather than step down to stage one at this time, allowing us the ability to see how the demand reacts when we return to seasonal norms. But I do see, or foresee, if the residents take conservation seriously, we should be at a stage one shortly. I can tell you that our pump run hours have almost been cut in half, but this doesn't mean we can go back the way we used to use this valuable resource. Going forward, the residents will have to adopt water conservation practices, or we will be thrown back into the crisis we faced in June. If every household uses water responsibly, this will buy us the time to get the new well online and implement other options that are available to us. Violation notices were sent out to customers who have failed to comply to restrictions. I do want to mention that residents have approached me with questions which I've attempted to answer, but the village does have a process for handling inquiries. For the benefit of all, we should follow that process. Jesse Southard, Lisa Kivitt, and other council members and I do at times try to answer your questions when we hear from you, but that cannot always be the case. I still want to mention that many of your questions can be answered by going to www.deq.hnc.gov. That's the website for the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. And on that drinking water page, you can bring up the local water supply plan and do a search by year of all our production numbers and consumption data that we were required to submit to the state. If you spend a little more time on the site, there's additional information that all water purveyors are required to submit. One other question that I think I need to address is that an inquiry from a gentleman to tour our facilities. At this time, that isn't possible. Most utilities today are very sensitive, security-sensitive, and many have the facilities locked down, whereas years ago, utilities conducted tours open to the public on a routine basis. You know, all utilities no longer can do, that's not the case today, in today's world today. Also want to mention that a summary has been put together by Lisa, a summary of all the council meetings since 2006. And in a minute, you'll find the history of the efforts of the past councils and how they dealt with water system problems such as sources of supply, putting wells online, things like that. I think a lot of residents may find that interesting, may again answer a lot of questions. Let me just go on. Next, yeah. Next on the item I want to talk a little bit about, the current well under construction, the driller Charles Underwood and the project engineer, Mr. McGugan, P.E., has submitted water quality samples to Lebanon, Florida, and we're waiting for the test results specifically of the radium nuclei. I've been told that this has become a little bit of a hole within the project. Jesse, Mr. Southern, has been in contact with the drillers' project manager and has been present for fast-tracking of this project. There has been a, we're still trying to get it fast-tracked and get it back online as soon as possible. We did, they have provided us with the as-built of the well of thirteen. Another item is that a month ago, the village sent out a notice to all our residents requiring a recent copy of the test results of their required backflow devices, and their responses have been, it's been very good. Jesse met last week with Representative BSI about administration of the village's backflow program. After considering calls from another vendor of the same service and after further review, if it proves beneficial, we will go forward and enter into a formal agreement with them. Just a note, BSI handles the administration of cross-connection programs for most of the other water purveyors in our area. I'm currently working on an ordinance in Ariture that I hope council will adopt that deals with cross-connection program. Again, the state, as mentioned before, the state requires that the water purveyor administers and enforces the cross-connected program, but it is the customer who is the responsible party to comply with the state statute. Another item, just go ahead.
What does BSI do?
They will administer program, they will take care of the compiling all the data, they do, we would then go to their website, we can look at all the reports that the certified backflow tester has sent them. They will contact the homeowner, they will also contact the certified tester, they do have a list of them. They will handle the program, basically. They will notify the homeowner on an annual basis that the test needs to be done.
And where do they get the names of the homeowners?
I will provide those.
You provide them.
We will provide those.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Okay. Just another note about our water supply, production I should say, not supply. In July, during one of the first in a series of wonderful rainstorms, lightning knocked out of skater at two of the wells. Jesse had contacted, has contacted, did contact a reliable technician who came out and got the communications back up and running during this critical time. If you can recall, this was high demand and high production time. That's the good news. The bad news is yesterday I learned that Zetron, the company who provides the parts and backup for this radio-based skater system, no longer has replacement boards, and that we were fortunate enough that the, our local technician was able to report the damage board and restore the system. So as a heads-up to other council members, we'll be assessing our current skater needs, and this will no doubt be a future budget item. Technology has come a long way since our skater system was installed. Again, speaking about advances in technology, we finally received our shipment of residential meters from Badger, along with additional electronic heads to update a number of existing meters. We've come a long way from when a meter reader used to go door-to-door and read meters and log it in a printed book. This new generation of meters, AMA, known as Advanced Meter Analytics, enables Jesse to not only read the meter but generate a profile for the customer's usage, indicating quantity and time when the water is used over a selected period of time. I can see this being a real benefit to our customers when determining leaks when they took place and also other events of high usage. Another item, and I'm almost done here. Jesse's effort to input data into our GIS system as well as our valve exercising program is replacing the back burner while he deals with the recent demands that have been placed on him. His plate is full, but he still needs to read meters, leaks need fixed, meters need changed out, the wells are looked after, and customer requires are responded to. One last thing. Again, addressing a resident's question here. Yes, we of the village, we do look into grants and what grants are available. Last week, I did attend a six-hour class held by the Division of Water Infrastructure, which is the state agency that provides funding to water systems through various loans and grants. Hopefully, the village may qualify for future grants, but we're competing against municipalities for a finite amount of money, and most of these municipalities have professionals on staff, his job is to obtain grants. And also, we compete against other communities that have engineers and consultants on retainers. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't attempt to take advantage of what is offered, and it just means we'll take time and effort, and we're on a learning curve here. Also, council would like, I do have a list of available funding programs offered by DWI at this time, and I can distribute that copy to the members after the meeting.
Okay.
And that is it.
Any questions, gentlemen? Councilman Morgan?
Yep.
Okay. Moving on to streets and park. Councilman Norman?
Okay, the park trails. Those are an ongoing thing. And as we've all noticed, we've had a lot of rain, and a lot of rain, and then some more rain. And every time he wants to go out there and work on the trails, guess what? It rains. And unfortunately, the trail has to be a certain, it has to be dry, not soaking wet, be damp, in order for him to complete the work and get it done so it's not draining all over the place. And every time he goes out there, he was out there yesterday, I think, and Mother Nature had taken over most of the places he'd already fixed. So this is going to be an ongoing thing until it stops raining. What I am asking people, and people have asked, as long as he's not out there working his crew, go ahead and walk the trails. And you'll know if they're out there. The tractor that's there right now will probably be back to the trails. If that tractor is moved, or you hear him back there, or his crew, please don't walk the trails. But as long as they're not working on him, go ahead and walk the trails. You're not going to do any damage since Mother Nature's doing that for us. Other than that, when he can get to it, when it's been dry enough, I promise, he will get it done. He wants to do it right the first time so that it doesn't have to keep coming back and repairing and repairing. And every time he does that, that's money out of his pocket because he doesn't charge the village to do that, where some people might want to do that. So I'm very grateful that he's being very conscientious of doing the job right the first time. So that's all I have to say about the parks. Again, if he's back there, don't walk back there. If he's not, feel free to go ahead and use the trails. Any questions?
Anyone? Nope.
That's all I've done.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to public safety. Councilman Nelson?
Okay, first of all, Police Chief Michael, want to report?
How are you guys doing today?
Good.
So all our month has been pretty well. Like I said, we've got, of course, Caleb should be finished with training here in the next, I would say, three or four weeks, if we're willing. James has been released out of training, you've seen him out about riding around, stopping some cars, doing what he's been doing. So like I said, we're happy to report that for us, probably it looks like we're getting back on track. I know that last month, there were some folks, some citizens that expressed some concerns about Harris Trucking and various possible other trucking companies around here speeding through the neighborhoods, running stop signs and so on. I've asked myself and the guys to go out and have heavy enforcement on those areas just for that purpose. We have made some leeway with some things. I actually made contact with Harris Truck directly and spoke with one of their supervisors who was over at the fleet management or wherever it may be, and advised him of these complaints. And I don't know if this is necessarily a good thing or not, but he said, "No, I explicitly told my guys, do not speed in any way, shape, form through Foxfire." We know you guys are heavy on us, and so therefore, they have explicit instructions. I said, "Well, whether they miss that message or they don't care about the message anymore, this is what we've gotten, so therefore, just know that we're going to be out and we will be in force." Since then, I've seen numerous Harris trucks come through here, and all of them were well under our speed limit. So Lisa, it looks like we're getting some valid understanding there. Outside of that, I don't have anything else for the police department. Like I said, we're just trying to keep everything afloat while these guys are finishing everything up. Derek is due to do his finalized FTO class at the end of this month, per him coming on, so we're looking forward to those things.
I just want to make people aware, and I think some people don't know this, that the police do do house checks if you are on vacation. There is a form out in the lobby that you can fill out, bring it to the village, and it will go into their mailbox. So basically, what it is, is you put down when you're leaving, when you're coming back, and they will check your home while you're away on a daily basis to make sure everything's okay. So that is available, they are doing it, and they do a good job with doing that. So I don't know if people know that's available to us.
Yeah, anytime, like, if you guys are going out of town for anything, feel free to drop that form off, stop by, call us, whatever we need to do, we'll be more happy to put it on the checklist, and we will go by and check door handles and whatnot and make sure everything's good. If it's not, then we'll do our part to make sure that it's all re-securred and handled and we're going on with our days.
And if you have a timer on a light, don't be surprised...
If we call.
Yeah, if they call. A friend of mine put a timer on the light, they have a Ring camera, they saw Caleb at the front door checking the door. She called me and she said, "There's somebody in my front door checking," and he wanted She called me and she said, "There's somebody in my front door checking and he wanted to know if she was home." And she said, "Why would he ask if I'm home?" I said, "Because you have a light on." They don't know if you're home or not now, so.
That's what we're here for.
Yeah, if you do have timers in your house at night and you're gone, mark that on the sheet.
I did have a question, yeah. And I may have missed it because I wasn't here for the last meeting, but was a decision made on the plate cameras?
No.
No.
Okay. We didn't even talk.
You didn't talk about it?
No.
All right.
We're still trying to get feedback from all of them.
Okay.
So nothing yet.
Okay.
By the way, I called Harris Trucking dispatcher about a year and a half ago about the same thing and all of a sudden they pulled me down.
Whatever it takes.
What is James driving?
He's driving the 23 Charger that we got last year.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. What?
How's he doing?
He's doing very well. Like I said, they're polar opposites as far as their personalities and their drive, but that works out well for us because we get, make sure everybody gets equal share of everything. So we're checking all of our boxes and all avenues.
They're doing a good job.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Fire Chief Harry.
I'm not being a police officer. I don't know if God sends you that. Back from vacation. I had a great time. A little bit about the storm. We did have storm coverage. We had 12 people between the two stations for a day and a half. Thankfully, we did not see the volume of calls that we have seen in past storms. We actually only ended up running about eight calls in the two-day period, although yesterday was kind of an anomaly. We ran eight just in the one day. But for the month of July, call volume was up a little bit. We ran a total of 92 calls, 34 of which were down here in Foxfire. We're up about 15% over last year's numbers. Couple other just notable things. We did host the Foxfire property associations CPR classes. I think they did four of them that were up at the main station. I know the PD was there and I know a number of citizens were. We'll continue to do that in the future if there's a need. We're looking at trying to do that quarterly so that if anybody in the community needs it, whether you're a healthcare worker or just a general citizen that wants to learn CPR or how to use an AED, we'll do that. Along the lines of the door check, the fire department does offer and oftentimes does smoke detector checks and replacements and battery replacements, especially for those that may not feel comfortable getting up on ladders. The one thing we do ask is if you have the batteries, just call up to the station and we'll schedule that, you know, when we're not running calls. A lot of times we say 11 o'clock and we'll try to get down there, but that is something that we do. And then during the storm, something that I put on the Facebook page and just so the council and the PD knows, the fire department has multiple sump pumps. During Matthew in Florence, we pumped out a lot of crawl spaces. This particular storm, we had one crawl space, but really what it did is allow us to pump it out so that they could get their HVAC back up and running. So it was about 85, 90 degrees inside the house. The water was up to the HVAC system in the crawl space. By pumping it out, we were able to help them get that back on. So those are kind of some of the things that we do. And that's about it, unless you have any questions in reference to the storm.
I see you've got about 69% of the calls here in Foxfire for EMS service.
That's about right, yep.
And fires, 8%.
Correct. And then you have to also add in the good intent, some of the good intent in the false alarms, because some things that get dispatched as fires, if we're canceled in route, that gets cadded as a good intent. So we started responding as a fire and then it could be a fire alarm. Like the other night, example in the heat of the storm, we got dispatched to four bodily leak. There is no four bodily leak. It's a set of bamboo, was bodily leak in pincers. So we got dispatched as a structure fire, ended up being a good intent, but there was nothing found there. So that's an example of how that happens.
Anything else? Could you go? That's all I have.
Okay, I guess I'm up. Mayor's report. I will start off with the financials. So general fund, we have a total, hold on one second, I'm sorry. So in capital trust, we have a total of $2,462,670. Balance on hand at First Bank is $1,027,000. So total cash on hand is $3,086,765. Our reserves right now for various funds are $1,435,638. On the water fund, we have a lot less money on hand now since we're putting that new well online. So in capital trust, we have $856,833. We have total reserves of $175,000 and a total balance on hands of $1,250,373. So our funds are dwindling there in that water department.
What's our interest rate on capital trust right now?
It's got to be around 5% because this month we earned $3,785 in the water fund and we earned $10,880 on our general fund. So it's right around 5%. So until they lower the interest rates, we're going to be okay.
It should be the wrong.
Yeah. So that's the financials. Review of the West End Fire Contract, I think we need to basically table what we have because we need to get a meeting together because there have been some changes that are not what we agreed to, so.
Yep.
We can't move forward with that contract. I have got just some general comments regarding, again, citizens' questions. I was presented a question from a citizen regarding land that apparently someone mentioned in social media, which I do not pay attention to, regarding land that was sold in some kind of a closet deal in the village, basically for the development of Windy Ridge. It was basically claimed that, someone made a claim regarding 30 acres of village property that was closet sold to a developer and rezoned it into a subdivision. What I have to tell you, number one, the village has never owned that property. The only property the village owns in that general area is a little square that the water tower is on. That property has been privately owned for decades. And as far as closet selling of property by the village, there are general statutes on how villages have to sell property. There has to be public notice, there has to be an opportunity for upset bid, so. And the claim was made so very matter-of-factly like this person was an expert and that they would have bought the property had they known. And I am just angered by the fact that people just criticize and claim illegal activity when there is absolutely no basis for it. And I am, that's one thing I will not let go is when people impugn the reputation of the village or the council. And the other thing is, is that there was another comment made on social media regarding our building moratorium or the lack thereof and that perhaps council members are on the take for building permits. And it was also agreed to by other people in the comment stream. And again, this council works very hard for no money and we've agreed to that. That's what we volunteered for. And it's just, it's again, something I'm not going to put up with and I'm not going to let those kinds of accusations go without a rebuttal. And I just think it's disgusting that people, you know, if people want to make those claims, I invite them to run for office and come do the job and then they'll see what it's really like. So that's what I have to say about my general comments. I do. Onto new business. Anyone have any questions for me, first of all?
No.
Okay. Onto new business. Oh, I'm sorry, there was one other email. We did that in the consent agenda. I did receive an email regarding conditions of the golf course. And this citizen is extremely frustrated with the condition of the golf course. They said that they've actually spoken to the GM and keep getting, you know, they're just not getting any response for the condition of the building, the weeds that are growing, the heavy equipment that is in full display at that building, which it was never intended to be used the way it's being used. As I understood it, it was to help put the golf carts in there and that heavy equipment was not going to be permanently stored or piles of stone and all of that. And I want to make sure that people understand that the village is very frustrated with this situation too. There are some ordinances, some zoning, that uncontrolled growth of weeds is not allowed in the village and we are trying to deal with this as best we can through our ordinances. And if we, and that's what we're working on, but it is a very frustrating situation for us to, this is someone that, you know, between the general store and our two commercial properties are really, as far as I'm concerned, really not holding up their end of the bargain. So we're working on it. If we have to strengthen our zoning and our ordinances, we will. And in the meantime, we're hoping that these industries or these businesses will step to the plate and clean up their properties. All right, now we're moving on to new business. We have got a proposal for public comment procedures and I think everyone has a copy of it. And basically, I don't know if you've ever been to the county, our old version said people need to sign in for public comments and all of that. So we want to make it a little bit more the way we run things right now. The biggest change, if there are any changes, I would say, is that we want to put some time trains on public comments. We want to hold both public comment periods to a maximum of 30 minutes. And would that be 30 minutes total or 30 minutes each?
Total.
So it's 15 minutes or 30 minutes?
But why is it, it's up to you.
Yeah, okay, so 30 minutes depending on, but yet each person would be allowed three minutes to speak. That'd be three minutes in most cases is plenty of time. What else? Oh, and just the other thing is that, you know, discussions between speakers and the members of the audience aren't permitted, that the speakers are addressing the council as a group, not as individuals, and also that the speaker would come up to the lectern, give their name and address, just the way we're doing it now. People must be respectful and courteous, of course, and if there are any prepared documents, that they are also left for the village clerks so that they can be used as backup for the meeting. And again, speakers shall not discuss any of the following, which are matters which contain the candidacy of any person seeking public office, including the candidacy of the person addressing the council, matters which are closed session matters, including but not limited to the matters within the attorney-client privilege, anticipated or pending litigation, personnel or property acquisition, matters which may be made confidential by law or matters which are the subject of public hearings. And then that's it. And of course, public comment, it's not a forum for back and forth discussion with the council either. We could always, after the public comment period, we could discuss something if we wanted to.
Can I add that if someone can't make the meeting, that they can email me?
Yep.
With a comment and I'll give it to the council at the meeting.
Okay.
So there's always the other options if you can't make the meeting.
Right, yes. Do we want to put that in here as well? Do we want to add that?
Do you like that?
Yeah, I think maybe as probably number one, that you know, you can't make the meeting and you have a public comment that you want voiced. It can be submitted via email. So do we need to make a motion to accept this process or yes?
I'll make a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We were given this land use plan, I believe, just yesterday. I don't know, it might have been, was it yesterday or the day before?
It might have been Friday. I think she sent it on Friday.
Okay. What I think, what I'd like to do is, I've gone through it, but what I really think we need to do is put this on our work session agenda.
And you do.
Okay. So we will be discussing this land use plan. I do have a lot of comments already. I'm sure you will too, so.
I'll look it up before we head.
Yes, so this will be added to our, what is that date? It's the, I don't know, but our, our August work session.
Twenty ninth, I think.
It's the 30th. No, twenty ninth is right.
Twenty ninth.
Yep.
Okay. And then our building moratorium, we've been asked and it's been mentioned that we should be looking into building a moratorium and I did that. And number one, there's, it's, building moratoriums, you just don't declare them and move on or not move on. There's a general statute, it's General Statute 160D-107, which deals with how you would go about putting in a moratorium. And basically, you have to have, you have to have a public hearing, which is a 10-day notice. You also have to prove in your moratorium that you've already done mitigation and that you've tried to avoid a moratorium before you actually do it. And that's what we're doing right now.
Right.
We are in the process of doing that. So at this point, it would be premature to even go, to even be doing this, as far as I'm concerned. You guys may feel differently, but.
I agree.
We are, and you know, you open yourself up to, you know, lawsuits and it's really not warranted at this point. I mean, we, the biggest thing is our pump runtime, not our supply of water. And it's also, we are asking people to conserve on their irrigation when you really get down to it. And if people, and I understand if you have brand-new landscaping, you do have to irrigate. But if you've got established landscaping, irrigation is a minor use of water at that point. At least that's what I have found. I haven't watered my grass in probably three years and.
You've got your own well, don't you?
I do, but I still haven't watered my grass in over three years. And once that grass gets established, you know, those roots are so deep, I mean, you could water, it does go dormant. It might get brown. It's not going to die. And everyone who's seen it, my grass was crunchy before it started raining and now it's growing like crazy. So again, I think what we're asking for is people to conserve in their irrigation. And I don't think that's unreasonable and it may happen from time to time, but I think that's the price we pay for having the village that we've got and I don't think it's a big imposition. I don't know, I don't know if you guys.
I agree with you. I agree with you.
And we are, we are still looking at additional well sites.
Yes, we are.
Um, and that's all, it's, it doesn't end, so. And obviously, we have to get funds available. Um, we have to start allocating. We might even have to allocate general account funds into the water fund. We might be raising rates for high, for high users. Um, in fact, I think we will be raising rates for our high-volume users. Because actually, those are the users that are forcing us to buy more property and install more wells. And at this rate, I would say a new well, since we don't own any property, is probably in the $400,000 to $500,000 range, every new well. So it's, it's not a, it's not a small proposition, and you have to find the right spice, spot as well. You don't, it's not like other places where you, you put a drill in the ground and hit water. Um, everyone here, I think, knows that, but...
Well, there was someone on Richmond that tried to drill, well, 40, 400, uh, $4,500 later, no water.
Yeah, no, it's, it's common here that you don't hit, that you don't find water, so. Anyway, and there's, there are, there have been studies, and there are studies regarding hooking up to um, the county or another source of water. Now you're looking at millions of dollars of expenses, which we all understand. Even if it were $3 million, $3 million, a $3 million loan, and it's probably more than that, a $3 million loan, and people are saying, oh, you can get a low-cost loan. You really can't.
Where?
Where, I know, where's my, here it is. $3 million at 5%, you're looking at $14,000 a month for 40 years, okay? At 3%, which I guess we would be lucky, and that's probably impossible, you're looking at $10,739 a month for 40 years. So it's, I just want people to understand that these are options. They are not free. And again, if we can conserve a little bit, um, it puts our, it puts our position, gives us a much better financial position. And again, we are not asking people to shower with friends or anything. All we're asking them to do is, all we're asking them to do is to limit some of their irrigation at this point.
And it's not uncalled for. I mean, many, many, many states have water restrictions. Every summer, every winter. So, um, you know, for the couple months that we've had to restrict our water consumption, it's paid off. Our, our time on the pumps has gone down.
Right.
So it is working. Um, and really, I mean, if that's the worst thing you have to do in your life, we're doing pretty good.
Right. So that's where, that's where my opinion is on moratorium, and I'm...
I agree.
And the council?
We don't need it yet.
No.
The council is in agreement?
Yes.
Okay. So we know what we have to do. We are working towards those things. And we don't have any old business.
Nope.
So now we're moving on to public comment period of items that were listed on this agenda. Is there any, are there any comments? No? Being no comments, um, I'd like to...
I'll make a motion, adjourn.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.